Okay. Any board members have any questions for Yvonne or Ruth before we move on to the next level?
Well, if I just, you know, if Ruth or Yvonne want to talk a little bit about some of the things that you see happening in classrooms. And then I think I know questions that I get are about lunch cafeteria and even I think we even talked about recess. And so maybe just starting with those three, kind of those aspects.
Sure. Ruth and I are both working on dividing our playgrounds into kind of separate play zones. As many, you know, three to four different play zones on each of our playgrounds. So that when children are at school, they can stick with their cohort class and play together in a certain area of the playground. And over a couple of days' time, they would actually get to rotate through all the different sections of the playground. We are working, I haven't had my recess supervisor team in yet. We're kind of reworking our lunch and recess schedules to free up more breaks for students and teachers during the day. And get some of the traditional noon recess staff inside helping us in the lunchroom. So the playground is definitely part of our, our mix of how we're going to keep our children in their cohort. But having as much fun outside as they can throughout the day. Ruth, do you want to add to that part?
Yeah, we revisited the lunch times and added times in between each lunch. Grade level lunches because we need to sanitize the tables after each grade level has a lunch. Because all three grade levels will be sitting with their classes, which is typical. But the tables will be spaced further apart within the cafeteria area. And we worked with Sue Milliken, both Yvonne and I, I think Yvonne, you did this as well today. Met with Sue in order to help streamline the time when the kids pick up their food and check out with one of the staff there. And so we have a nice routine where they come in, pick up their food, sit at their table. And then at the end, we'll have one class dismissed at a time.
I will be meeting with Sue next week. We did our work with Kinders today, so I think I'm meeting with her Monday. Or tomorrow, I have no idea what day it is right now, truthfully. Anyway, we have that on the calendar. And the other pieces, we've each worked with Jim Hayden and our director of buildings and grounds to do a walkthrough of the buildings. To determine where we're going to put our signage, where we're going to put our six feet apart marks. How we're going to flow traffic through the buildings throughout the day. Today, our tech crew came in and placed our screening, health screening computers in our entrances of our buildings, the main entrances. So families and staff, when we come in, we can do our self-screening right there. So tech team, also thank you so much. That's a lot of hard work there.
Yeah, we, part of that is also setting up the hand sanitizer stations throughout the school. One of the routines that will happen is each classroom will use hand sanitizer before and after leaving and coming back to a classroom. So when I met with my staff this morning, that was one of the things that we talked about. We talked about was developing all those routines, such as teaching hand washing, developing a hand washing schedule within the course of the day. Using hand sanitizer, teaching routines of social distancing of six feet apart. I think that was it, but there was a long list of like new routines. Because typically in any given year, you're teaching classroom routines to your students. So now we're just, we're adding on a few more for these safety protocols.
Right.
Another neat conversation going on and lots of brainstorming with staff is we want to make sure in the classroom with the little ones, that they actually can put their hands on books and they can put their hands on math manipulatives. They can have art supplies for when art specials are coming into the classrooms. And so we're looking at things like having our Mrs. Kautcher art teacher help us determine what a typical art kit might look like for kindergarten, first grade, and so on, that we might be able to keep in a Ziploc bag for that child. So that every, when art comes, they have their own materials. It's less limiting to what, you know, we just don't want to see our kids sitting there just drying every time. We want to have opportunities for that. We want them to be able to use their math manipulatives. So we're thinking about having kits where they keep all of their own things, their workbooks and their other tools. And some kind of bin or bag or cubby that in the end of the day, it's sprayed off with everything else. And so we want them to have as much normalcy and shifting gears as possible. We were also working, Ruth and I, with our teachers, thinking about how we're going to give breaks from wearing our masks at different times. You know, outside breaks as often as possible. How are we going to do rotations and spaces where that can happen? So there are lots of brainstorming lists going on, lots of creative ideas. Now Ruth, what else may I miss in?
Yeah, as we get the environment set up and the routines set up, we're, Yvonne and I are going to start making little videos to share out with our families that will show what a classroom looks like, what the cafeteria looks like, the different hand sanitizing stations. So we're going to organize those in what's called a flip grid with all of different little videos labeled on there. So that families can get, you know, visualize what that's going to look like before school starts.
Yes, I think that's a great idea. We'll run them through a video in the vestibule where, well, first of all, you have ringing the doorbell and waiting to be let in the, in the building. And then show them how to use the computer if they're coming in for, you know, they're only coming in for scheduled appointments. But when they're coming in, they'll need to go through the same screening questions and checking in. So we'll be teaching folks how to do that. We'll be teaching them, you know, when children forget something at home, lots of children do every day. But we will have bins labeled by grade or class, one way or another, that parents can leave it outside the door. Let us know that it's there in the bin. We'll come out and get it for them, lunches and snow boots and, you know, those kinds of things.
Okay. Do I, now, do I have any questions from board members? No, I see a bunch of shaking heads. Oh, Matt.
I think the only, and Ruth, I think you touched on it, was one that I had brought up to Rick last week was about drop off and pickup. I think the idea that you have going, that you described for pickup is innovative. And I think it will help parents feel comfortable. So I'm pretty excited to see that in action.
We're pretty excited to see that, too. I think that it's one of those things like Ruth alluded to, that some things are going to change for the better. For, you know, parking lot grid, gridlock, if you will, sometimes, and, and safety in the parking lots. And that pickup loop might really, we've been talking about it for a while. And, you know, I'm, I was always thinking, well, I see, I see safety things, you know, I'm worried about this or that. Or how am I going to be in two places instead of one? How can I be at the bus and the loop? And I don't have to do everything. I have a team that can do that and they're excited to do it. And when I taught in Farmington, we, that's how we did it, you know? So we're talking about having a color, perhaps a colored sign in each family's dashboard. When you pull up, it'll be colored by grade level. And it might have the teacher's name and the student's last name or something like that, that we'll have folks out there with a radio. At the beginning of parents entering the pickup loop, we can radio in. We'll have the kids organized in ways that we can quickly retrieve them. And hopefully, for the most part, by the time the parents can circle the big black top in the back, we should have children out the door ready to hop in the car. So asking like always at the beginning of the school year, the first week or two, procedures take a little longer. We'll need some patience and sense of humor. And, and I think it's just going to be really great.
Just, just from how you describe it, like I said, I'm excited to see it in action. Because I think you're finding ways to address the situation, but also increase efficiency. And I think parents will be thankful, I would, I would imagine, I know I would be. So, you know, like you said, the first couple of weeks are always a little tweak, tweak here and there. But definitely excited to see that one addressed. Because I know that was one that was brought, you know, that dismissal was definitely at the elementary level was one that was brought up to me, so.
Right, our parking lots just can't handle everyone parking and coming in all at once. You know, when you've got 380 kids, including preschoolers, and while they leave a little earlier. But families coming in and meeting and turning around, you could have six, 700 day holders all at the same time. So we're hoping that it will make it safer and more efficient for our bus drivers to loop around the front. And our families to drive around the back. And if there are circumstances where someone might need to park in the parking lot in the front, it would be for some scheduled purpose.
Well, at least then you're limiting that number to something much smaller than it was previous, so.
Right, yeah, a lot safer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, ladies. Let's move on to Janet at Navigator.
Hi, everyone. A lot of the same things that Yvonne and Ruth are working on, we're working on at Navigator, too. I will start with the afternoon procedure that you guys were just talking about. Our plan is for bus dismissal to dismiss one classroom from each grade at a time. We have three doors that exit out towards the buses. And so each grade level will kind of be assigned a door. And then two minutes after that, one, another classroom from each grade. And so every two minutes, the busing kids will go out back by the buses. And then parent pickup in the front will be happening at the same time. What we'll do is survey parents right before school starts to find out who plans to be regularly picking up their children at the end of the day. And we will make signs for them to put in their car window. They'll be color coded by grade. And we'll have in big bold letters, the student's last name and their homeroom teacher. So that we can radio then into the building. Smith from Ms. Dingman's homeroom and have that student escorted out to the car. I figure we can probably do eight or nine cars at a time. Just like Yvonne was saying, it's going to be a process. In the first couple of weeks, it will probably take a very long time. But eventually we'll get in the swing of things and move those cars through there more quickly. On the opposite side, at the beginning of the day, the parent drop off procedure won't really change. I'll have a couple of extra adults outside just reminding kids to mask up in case they hop out of the car and they don't quite have their mask on yet. And then what will be different is the buses. It used to be that the buses would come in and they would wait until 8:30. And then at 8:30, they would all open their doors. And this mass of young humanity would come into the building in this big crowd. And we don't want to do that now. So as the buses pull in, they will unload one bus at a time and pull away. And the buses will be communicating with each other. You know, to say bus 15 unloading, bus 15 clear, bus 15 pulls away, and then the next one comes along. So the kids will be coming into the building at a slow trickle instead of a waterfall. The other thing, I guess, in the classrooms, what I've been able to do is, for those of you who aren't familiar with Navigator's floor plan, I guess, we have quite a few classrooms that are divided by a foldable wall. And we have spread out as many as possible to fill all of our classrooms. And made it so that a good chunk, all of fourth and fifth grade actually have a two-classroom sized classroom now. Each homeroom has a double classroom. We opened the walls. It also provides a window for each of those classrooms. Navigator was built in the 70s when they built schools with very few windows for energy purposes. And so those interior classrooms never had exterior windows. This makes it so that all of fourth and fifth grade have an exterior window that opens. We can get fresh air in there as much as possible. So that was another benefit. We also have enough lockers so that we won't have to share. We'll spread them out as much as possible, especially with those little tiny lockers in the short hallways. The other thought with those lockers is we can't really have the kids be six feet apart and have lockers. But what teachers can do is make it part of their routine that they have kids whose locker number ends with a four can go out and get their things. And then they come back in and kids whose locker number ends with seven can go get their things. And so that will keep them 10 lockers apart and six feet apart without not having a system for it.
That's a great idea.
We will have hand sanitizing stations at all doors to the cafeteria and in and out of the playground. So that students are able to use hand sanitizer on their way in and out of the cafeteria and in and out of the playground. Like Ruth and Yvonne, we're dividing our playground into sections. So that kids will be able to take their masks off while they're outside. I started wondering how that's going to work because they have to have their mask on in the hallway on their way to the playground. But then they can take it off, but then they'll need it back on when they come back in. And I was envisioning these masks flowing all over the playground and, or just a big pile of them, which was not going to be good either. So what I did is I ordered some lanyards, great white lanyards. And the students will be able to clip their ID to the lanyard as, and they can have their mask on it. So when they're not wearing their mask, it's attached to their lanyard. And that'll work for lunch then, too. So that when they're eating, the, the lanyard isn't laying on the table. And then somebody spills chocolate milk and we've got milk all over the masks and everything. So I think it'll help keep them cleaner for lunchtime. And then it's a handy place for them to keep their own mask with themselves while they're on the playground.
That's a great idea.
We are going to have check-in stations like Ruth and Yvonne talked about. For if you forgot, you're, if you're bringing in some belongings that your child forgot, there'll be a sign there with directions for how to label that in a box. And we will just empty that box on a regular basis and take those things to kids' classrooms. We will have our check-in and checkout will be in that same foyer on clipboard. So that parents don't have to enter the building to do that. And that's also where we'll have the health screen for those who do enter the building for appointments, like a meeting or something like that. Any questions?
Any board member have a question for Janet?
I have a quick, sorry about that. I have a quick question. Janet, can you hear me?
Yep.
So, so with, that's a really cool idea about putting the mask on the lanyard. I obviously don't know what it looks like. But would there be a way, and obviously the families could provide this, to somehow put the mask in like a little Ziploc, like sandwich bag or snack bag? Because I just worry that like if it's on the lanyard and they're playing and stuff like that, that the mask could get contaminated.
That's a great idea. I like the idea of a little sandwich bag being on there.
And then it couldn't get wet and stuff like that as well, not just contamination from germs.
I like that idea.
Ruth and I were just talking about maybe we won't have so many syrup days at school.
Yeah, exactly.
It's sticky.
Or popcorn oil.
Yeah.
That's a really good idea, Bethany. Thank you.
Okay, any other board member have a question for Janet? No, I see the heads shaking. Okay, let's move on to Lori at Pathfinder.
Hello, everyone. Before I start describing what we've been doing at Pathfinder, I do want to just give a shout out. The custodians and the tech department have just been amazing. Like I think it was Yvonne or Ruth alluded to, they really have gone above and beyond. And I have had some amazing teachers working. You would not even know that it is not their contract year right now. But they have been coming in and texting and asking questions and really keeping me on my A-game. So some really important people doing a lot of work at Pathfinder that I have to give my thanks to. We have been very busy this week at Pathfinder. I have held four orientation meetings with parents. We did Zoom and I ended up with about 110 families represented on the parent orientations. Lots of students, lots of parents, held four separate sessions and they had some great questions. But mostly, they've been very supportive of the plans that we've put into place. Another thing that just happened was Chrissy Curvin, who leads our web group, and that's where everybody belongs. They are our transition program. She spent all day Monday and all day Tuesday training about 50 or so eighth graders how to lead mini sessions with the seventh graders. She has got amazing energy and I could hear her in my office shouting and singing and hooting and hollering. And the kids had a great time in just the training. The next day, they all met with their small groups of seventh graders. And I had a lot of teachers volunteer to kind of be in the Zoom room with the eighth graders leading the seventh graders to make sure everything went okay. And they pulled off great orientation with almost all of our seventh graders. So that was a fantastic experience, yes. Hats off to Chrissy Curvin and the teachers who volunteered for that.
Yeah, that's a big project.
Yes, and it, you know, from switching from face to face to virtual, it went really well. We were very impressed with the results.
Good, good.
Today, I actually met with my school improvement team. We had a three-hour workshop that was fantastic. We spent a lot of time talking about some of the procedures and the first day, what it's going to look like. So I was appreciative of their planning. We are planning for our first half-day to be really focused on teaching the students the new routines and building relationships. We've made a list of routines that the students need to know for face to face, as well as routines that the students need to know if they are virtual. And I have staff members who will be leading virtual half-days for the students who are at home, as well as the staff members who are in the building, will be helping the students with the new protocols. We're really focusing on making sure that students feel comfortable and working with them through the anxiety of all of the changes. We have planned a family visit day on September 3rd, where families with one student and one guardian can sign up for a half-hour slot to bring their students in to see the building. We're going to start it at 7:30 and end around 3:30. And they'll come in and they can have a half-hour to see what the building looks like. Our biggest concern is that we have seventh graders who have never been in the building. So we want to make sure that their first day at Pathfinder isn't one full of worry on September 8th. We want to make sure that they're comfortable and kind of know where to go and how to get to their locker. Any questions about what we've been doing this week?
I like the parent and student ability to come in. I know that was always important for my boys, to be able to walk around the building, find their locker, you know, kind of walk through their schedule. So that's a big thing.
Yes, yeah, we think it's going to be well-attended. And when I talked to the parents about it, they were glad to hear it. I got a few emails about students who were concerned because Pathfinder seems so big to those sixth graders. And it's kind of confusing.
I was going to say, it's kind of confusing, so yeah.
Not easy to navigate.
No, no, not just, not on the first day when you just walk in.
Right.
There is one thing I forgot to mention about Navigator. We're doing a similar thing as what Lori had planned for incoming fourth graders. Where August 31st and September 1st, that Monday, Tuesday before school starts, will be a chance for fourth grade families to do the same thing. One parent, one child. I'll have maps and a scavenger hunt set up for them to just do self-guided tours throughout the building.
No, perfect.
It's a great way to transition those kids in.
Yeah, I saw, I was kind of riding over the shoulder of my son during the eighth grade orientation this week. And it went really smoothly. I know I was watching him pay attention and he was kind of asking some side questions to us as, as we were going through it. And so, no, awesome job. And it seemed like the other, the kids and parents were asking great questions. So it sounds like there's some, some good excitement there. So, awesome.
I would agree. You can definitely feel it's amping up to the first day. It's, it's exciting. I love this time of year. Our procedures that we've been setting up are really similar to what Ruth and Janet and Yvonne have all stated. We've been, we've been identifying entry points to the building.
Hold on, Lori, there are a few people in the audience that need to mute themselves, please. There, thank you. Okay, go ahead, Lori.
We've been identifying entry points to the buildings. One thing that's kind of fun at Pathfinder is our main hallways have locker lanes and walking lanes. And it's labeled just like that. So it shows the students, if you're opening your locker, which are assigned every other locker, this is kind of your space. And if you're walking, this is where you'll be going. And Patty did a great job during our orientation telling the students that it was like a precursor to driver's ed. You know, you always stay to the right. You have to look before you turn. And, and comparing it to their upcoming events in their life, so.
That's great.
That's just wonderful. I think the pull-ahead training is an excellent idea, especially when you use the peer-to-peer type setup. That was very good.
Yeah.
Panicked and wondering what the heck they're doing.
Right, right. Anybody have any more questions or comments before, for Lori, before we move on to the high school?
I have a question about drop off, pickup.
Sure.
Are you staggering it the same way that they're doing at the lower levels?
The buses are going to be staggered, I believe, at every building. And, and just like at Navigator, where they used to all get off at 7:15. I've talked to Sue, we've had our meeting, and they are going to be letting off one bus at a time. All the doors in the complex area are going to be open. It used to be that all the students only had to file through two doors. But now they're going to have all the doors open just to avoid that crowding. And they'll be able to go down the rubber hallway or through the complex gym to sort of spread out the crowds as they come into the building as well. Dismissal is staggered. Five minutes before dismissal, it's kind of in three tiers. We're going to dismiss all students who ride the bus first. And they will, you know, get their items from their locker and head right up to the bus. And then three minutes later, we are dismissing, excuse me, students who are in clubs or athletics. So they can go to their locker and then head to their practice area or their club area. And then the last group to be dismissed are going to be students who walk or pick up. So they'll be last. And then I will take them out front. And we're going to have identified areas where they can stand on the sidewalk and be socially distanced for parents to pull up and grab them. So yes.
Okay.
Lori, you just want to touch on your lunch and how you got that set up, your cafeteria?
Sure, we've moved to three lunches. We have spread out so that there are three students at a table, which gives them lots of distance. We have moved our lunch into that vestibule area. That's kind of in between the cafeteria and the outside. It's the glassy area. So there'll be seating out there. We will also utilize the outdoor seating, as long as the weather permits, to spread students out there if they want. The cafeteria line will be spaced so that they are standing every six feet. And we've been already talking to parents about students using their student IDs to scan to get into their lunch account instead of using that numpad where they have to touch and enter their numbers to access their lunch account.
And just FYI, if, if they don't, if they can't scan, the earmark staff will type in their numbers on their computers, right? So they will not be using, there's no... on their computers, right? So they will not be using, there's no number pad being used. Yep. So, Lori, I also just touched about your, how you restructured your whole school schedule. I think that's important to know as well.
Excellent, yes. Grade seven through 12, actually, we are all moving to block scheduling. Moving into a block schedule will reduce the number of hallway passings that the students need to make during the day. It also allows them to, teachers, time to let them go to the bathroom when it's not crowded and to allow for the hand-washing scheduling. So every student will go to first hour, Monday through Thursday, and that's a regular amount of time. It's like 55 minutes. But on Monday and Wednesday, they will then go to hours two, three, and four. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, they finish out their schedule by going to five, six, and seven. So they'll have longer instructional blocks, and it also helps us meet the social distancing guidelines. Another benefit of it was that we got to build in what we're calling power time. And that is an additional 25 minutes attached to lunch that teachers can use to build relationships, work on community circles, support students in their work, and just really focus on relationships, social-emotional learning, and instructional support. We're excited to try out the new schedule.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited to hear how it goes because way back when, when Rick was principal there, you had block scheduling, so.
Yes.
Yeah. I'll be interested to hear how it goes with these other pieces in place, too, so.
It gives teachers a lot more flexibility in that block of time to just, you know, take care of all of these safety procedures.
Right, right. They don't have to worry about the passing time.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else for Lori before we move on to the high school? No? Okay. Thank you, Lori. Okay, I see Les and, oh, I do see April now, and I see Julia. Who's gonna talk about the high school?
I think Julie and I are both, Julia's got a couple topics and I've got a couple, too, if that's okay.
Sure, go ahead.
Julia, do you want to go first with the, with the block and open house?
Sure, yeah, I'll just kind of, yeah, tack on to what Lori was sharing there. I think, you know, we're excited about the block schedule for all the same reasons that Lori, you know, suggested. We've also extended the passing times that students have been used, students and teachers have been used to from five minutes to 10 minutes, to allow for the necessary sanitation to occur in classrooms, as well as for the scheduled hand-washing to occur. So hopeful that that will alleviate any type of rush to, to make sure those things happen well. Related to that, at the high school level, you know, every district in the county, every high school in the county is also going to block schedule. And, which is good in some respects, but also for our students who are in CTE programs or dual enrollment at the high school level, we're, we're really collaborating, you know, as, as well as we can as a county with the support of LES A to make sure that every one of our students still has access to their CTE program of their choosing or their dual enrollment programming, while also having accesses, access to the courses they need towards graduation. So that's been a really interesting puzzle that we're trying to think proactively about in the context of that block schedule. We also have a virtual open house in the work, so that'll be new. And we're looking forward to connecting with staff next week about what that might look like. But at the moment, we're looking at that being on the evening of September 1st from 6:00 to 8:00. And, and kind of like a, a digital translation of the kind of open house we've had in the past in person, but really having, expecting students and parents to be there and to ultimately follow their students' seven-hour schedule by visiting the Zoom room of each of those teachers in the hour that their student has them for 10-minute increments of, increments of time and five-minute passing periods so that teachers can take a breather and everybody else can, too. So looking forward to making that happen. And then I think, so, and then additionally, you know, really hearing from families as we're working diligently to get schedules filled and honored during these unique circumstances, you know, a lot of, I've heard from a fair amount of incoming seniors' parents just saying, okay, when is the SAT happening? My daughter's really been looking forward to applying early to colleges. And a lot of them are still expecting SAT, you know, and so we just, we're working hard to make sure that we are being very thoughtful about ensuring that all of the testing that needs to happen for our students to be eligible for whatever they want to do after high school is set to go in October with the dates aligned with the college board and that AP courses are set to go, you know, in the, in the college board space for our AP teachers before school even starts so that they can be communicating with their students if they want. So we're, we're feeling good about, about that as well.
Right.
About those things?
Okay, yeah, thanks, Julia. I think it was a nice segue. And, and also, I want to repeat what Lori said about processes in the cafeteria and the spacing and those pieces and the staggered bus drop-off and those pieces. Those are pretty much universal, seven through 12, things that we're doing. So I don't want to repeat that. This week at the high school, it's been, it's, first of all, the, the students and the parents are starting to come back in, especially our new enrollees. And I can tell you, that just raises your spirits right up to actually see students and parents back in the building. It's, it's, it's been way too long. And, and so it certainly is, everyone's smiling a little bit more and a little more, more jumping their step this week, which has been kind of nice. We spent most of today, this morning and this afternoon, have been meeting with principals from the other high schools here in the county, having Zoom meetings with them. And I think what we're trying to do is, you know, there are some things that we want to try in the hallway transitions. We have a lot of ideas for those pieces. And I want to get a kind of a, an understanding of what the other principals in the county were doing as well, too. And plus, we also have the benefit of that of a couple of our colleagues out there in the county are gonna be starting school a little bit early. So had a nice day exchanging ideas and, and sharing the pros and cons and rationale for all those little pieces, too. So, you know, we're gonna start putting those together this week. And then they promised, Jason and Howell and Harlan promised to meet with us and right after their first week is over and share with us exactly how, what worked. So we can learn from their experiences as well, which is, it's really kind of nice. So I appreciate everything they did. And it seems like they're all on the same page and they all have their same rationale for those as well, too. Talking with the PEA leadership today here at the high school, what we're gonna do now that, you know, we, we know where we're, hopefully, we know what our plan is gonna be moving forward. Let's put together a small little task force of teachers, administrators. And we want to make sure as we move into this next phase now, we're planning all the details, that they're part of that conversation as well, too. Specifically, what the classroom's gonna like, the social distancing pieces as well. How we're gonna try to come together, ensure that the, the rooms are clean, what we can do, what we can't do. So we're gonna be looking at putting that team together middle of next week with those teachers and moving forward with that. The other thing we talked about is we had our freshman orientation this week. Thanks for Julia and April. We did our Zoom meeting. I think we had, Julia, I think, was close to 100 parents, wasn't it? I think it was.
That's right.
And that was a lot of fun. It was really kind of neat. It was really well-attended. And, and some of the board members, I think Jim was there, too, watching as well, too. We're gonna make that available. I'm still finished trying to figure out how YouTube can go ahead and, and get a two-hour meeting so I can post it, but we'll be doing that week as well. And we're gonna take a page out of Lori's book. A nice thing about talking with Lori is that she's got so many great ideas. So on September 3rd, we're gonna be the same thing. We're gonna give an opportunity for our freshmen to come in during that day and take a look around the building. And we're gonna work with student government, maybe have some student leaders there from our, our this coming seniors. And meet with those freshmen and just, you know, show them where the rooms are, show them where they're gonna go. All the Pirate Academy classrooms are still upstairs, so the freshmen will can all be lumped together in a nice area to spread out, but in the same area. So we went through that process as well. The cafeteria, like I said, what we're gonna be doing is, is that we're gonna be bringing in extra tables. And we're gonna create a north-side cafeteria and a, and a south-side cafeteria. We have to clean and sanitize each table between lunches. We're gonna be running five lunches, just like the middle school. So we're gonna hopefully have enough tables. I think we've done the math right. So we can socially distance during lunch, less, three or less kids at a table. And then we'll have a, the first lunch will be on the south side. And then the second lunch is north side. And then I'll give our team a chance to clean and sanitize. So every lunch starts out with a clean and sanitized table. That's the best way. I think we talked with Jim that we're gonna be able to do that. We're looking at, we're, we're, we're kind of wrapping up the schedule, filling in the holes. And right now, the priority is, we got some classes that are kind of more, have more kids than we're used to, which is kind of a good problem in some cases. But, you know, our distance learning lab can have up to close to mid-30s, high-30 kids at one time, a couple other classes. So we spent a lot of time today with, with our team and technology team. And we're gonna move the distance learning lab into the media center. And the, that, the, yeah, I guess it'd be the east side of it. That way, we have a much more, bigger space. Those kids that are in there most of the day doing their online learning, their distance learning. So we're gonna transfer that, because we just need more room for that to make sure we can have separation. We're still gonna go ahead and plan the media centers and create two more larger spaces that teachers can, teachers can go to and conduct lessons if they feel they need a little more space at that time. And remember, in a block schedule, some of these classes are lasting a lot longer. And we want to have them start, Julia's gonna be working with us on PD, is how to break up that schedule to make that more balanced learning opportunities. So, and then the big point now is identifying those classes with high class sizes and looking for places within a high school that have larger spaces that we can move them to, to make sure we're doing everything we can to kind of expand out and give those cla-, those classrooms a chance to have a little more distancing to them. And then, let's see, other than that, I've got a long list here written in my check and scratch. Julia mentioned a little bit, too, we met today with the Michelle Radcliffe over at the ISD looking at CTE. And we're all kind of excited because I think, you know, all the county plans will be wrapped up this week. And so we're gonna be meeting next Thursday here, not a Zoom. And we're gonna sit down with Michelle and Laura Hahn from the ISD and April and I. And we're not gonna leave the room until we got CTE cleared up. We have to know what schedule works for those, our kids leaving and still can work with our schedule here and vice versa. But the high school, we have a lot of challenges. We have Howell that's on a block, but on five days. So it's A, B, A, B. And the next week is B, A, B, A, B. And that's gonna change. Brighton has Wednesdays off as far as their in-face-to-face. We have Fridays off as our face-to-face. So that's gonna be tricky. But the goal is, let's identify every student that we have that can, can travel from Pinkney and still have a face-to-face schedule if they want it. And identifying those students that can do face-to-face on CTE, but still might have to go into the Virtual Academy. And we'll take a look at those numbers. I think right now, we're about 88 kids, students here at the high school that are opting for virtual at this moment right now. So about 10% of our populace. So we're probably looking to be between about 880, 900 kids on campus and about 88 of them at this point. So we have to figure that out. And hopefully, it works out in a way that we can do it. But we have to make individual recommendations to these students and saying, I think you might want to go towards virtual. So you can go the EMT program or you can go there as well. And of course, they're making the same determinations with us, what kids they can send to us. A lot of our CTE consortium classes or latex classes are first and second hour. And whether or not they're gonna be able to send the kids to us, so we can teach them there as well. And then how do we make our virtual learning available to those kids? So that's a big issue. But Michelle has been great at the ISD and teaching me what I need to know and working with April and I. So we'll hopefully have that hammered out. And then the other piece, we talked about, great idea from, from Howell. That first day of school, we're all getting a little bit excited. I mean, just really is excited to have face-to-face. I know it's a really trying time, but talked with Brian Werlo over in athletics. And we would like to do just a little welcome back, maybe have the palms and the cheer team, maybe the drum line. Just some way to, you know, we can, we talked about this with the other principals. Let's capture the moment, how much we missed each other. And let's then drive our culture and let's think in those terms, too, as well. And it's, it's gonna be nice to see everybody again that we can see. So we're gonna try to put a little something like, not big, but just a little, just a little acknowledgement. You know, we're back in business. And then that's, I think that's really important to us as well. So I'm not sure, I'm sure I missed some stuff, but basically, that's my update up to the point. And like I said, I'm, I'm sure there's more. I've passed over here pretty quick, but I'm not wearing my glasses. I left them at home and I came back to work, so I can't really see what I wrote. So. There it is.
Whoops, sorry. Anybody, any board members have questions for Les?
The fact that I'm not running, not having any questions or anything is really, if anybody, I think, great that kind of across the board, you know, everybody's thought of a lot of various aspects of things. Obviously, the, the high school has its own complexities. So, you know, and, and I guess the part I feel super confident about and proud of, not just our district, but of the county districts, to say, this is still important to us. We need to, we need to collaborate. We need to be, you know, as best of friends as possible to really, you know, deliver what we need to for these kids. So, you know, huge kudos to, to not only our team, but, you know, for the, the participation of others to try to figure out how we can really, you know, accomplish. It, it might not be perfect. I mean, I think we're, we're all having some sense of realism that there, this isn't going to be perfect, but we're gonna make the darn best thing out of it that we can. And, you know, and everybody's trying to make that happen for the kids. So hu- huge kudos for something that is infinitely complex.
Michelle, it's Yvonne. I just wanted to add a couple of really important things that, just because time is getting away from us. But I, I really want to tell you, and, and all of us, probably speaking for all of us, I'm sure, to thank our office staffs. They are just turning on the dime. They're running, they're working double time. Lots of paperwork, lots of contacts, contacts, working really hard. Also, Transportation Sue Miller, to make all of these staggered times for buses, it's not an easy thing. Sue Mulligan being super flexible with Airmark. And there's a whole lot of work going on with our special ed team, LES A with Carrie and all of our LES A staff, looking into a lot of, a whole lot of IEPs and reworking to meet the needs of individual children. And I don't want that to go unnoticed.
And I appreciate that, Yvonne, because actually, I was gonna, I know Michelle wasn't aware, but Carrie Cowher, our special ed director, is, is in the room. So Carrie, I wanted to give you, if you have anything to add or things you want to share with the board?
Absolutely. Thank you and good evening. Once school resumes, we are going to be providing special education and related services to students in accordance with their individualized education program or their IEP. So therefore, each student, we will implement their IEP as written. And we will be able to make sure that they experience that, that robust programming experiences that they are used to here in Pinkney. Additionally, we're gonna make sure that we review any IEPs or 504s to make sure that those plans appropriately address any student healthcare needs in light of the COVID pandemic that, that we are in. And I, I guess I would just like to echo some statements from some of the principals who have spoken this evening earlier. We are just so fortunate to have an excellent and dedicated special education teachers and ancillary service providers here in Pinkney who truly work very hard each and every day to make sure we provide positive outcomes for kids. And many of them have been either emailing me or calling me this summer and sharing input or thoughts for consideration or just some really good points, too, for us to be looking at as we dive into next school year. So I'm, I'm just so thrilled to be working with such dedicated and excellent staff and, and to be here in Pinkney. So we're looking for the fall to be a good experience for our students who are on IEPs.
I think it's a great opportunity for everybody to come together better and get to know each other better, since you had to work so closely together. And the amount of work you're doing is amazing. I want you to know that we appreciate that. I appreciate that. And something occurred to me the other day that I had put out in an email, that it's nice that our families have something they can count on, something they can believe in, something that they know is going to be stable and bring some stability back into their lives. Something they can trust, rather than a lot of the rhetoric that's been going on. Obviously, done an amazing job and hours and hours, thousands of hours combined to put this all together and make sure you covered all the bases. And on top of that, it's still liquidity of it. You're still able to change on the fly as we find things out and to improve similar to what you do on a Six Sigma-type thing in business. So.
So I think it's wonderful. You guys are doing great in that special ed thing. What a challenge, thirty day mark and all that. But I know that I have confidence that you're going to do everything again for all these students. And it's just wonderful. We're all coming together like this. I'm really impressed and I'm glad to be a Pirate. Thank you very much.
Any other board member have any other comments or questions?
And Michelle, also Jim Hayden, I want to give him an opportunity to speak as well.
Absolutely. So if nobody has any other questions for Carrie, let's move on to Jim.
Hello, everybody. How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good, good. I want to thank my staff. They have just been, you know, we've been here since the beginning of this whole thing happened. And they've done a great job. Nobody's ever questioned why they have to be here. And I give them a lot of credit for that. I want to thank the administrators. This has been a very collaborative lesson on how to get things done. And every day it changes, but we understand that's just how it's going to be for the rest of the year. And we, you know, we used to be change could be in a month and then it came down to a week and then it came down to a day. And then it was coming down to minutes. But we'll be able to do it and I know my staff can do it and I know everybody will rise to the occasion. We were fortunate enough at the very beginning when COVID hit to procure handheld sprayers, electrostatic sprayers to clean the classrooms and clean the restrooms. Every building has at least one handheld sprayer, Pathfinder, Navigator. And high school have backpack sprayers. And that's how we're going to be the major part, how we will be disinfecting areas. Now, the chemicals that go into those backpacks and handheld sprayers now, the kill time for the COVID virus is down to three minutes. So that we're trying to, and if I can get a chemical that is below three minutes, we'll bring it onboard. I want to stress too, with the chemicals that we are purchasing are as far as I get questions about safety and things like that, they're, they're on the same level that we've always been using within our district. They meet the qualifications of the MSDS that we, that we supply to everybody. Again, we have no worries about that at all. Now, the questions are, what supplies will we be supplying to everybody? Every teacher on their first day of school will have a box of mask, a box of gloves, a gallon hand sanitizer with a pump. They will have a face shield and they also have a microfiber towel. Now, we've, we've been fortunate enough to partner up with Sintas. Where the microfiber towels are taken away every week and new ones dropped off that same week. And they will be constantly cleaning those for us. We have a contract with Sintas that guarantees us that we have gloves. Also now, because it just came up this week, now we have what they call quarantine gowns. So when a child has to be quarantined and his or her teacher has to go in with them, they have to wear what they call a quarantine gown. We have occurred those to the, this week. We also have what we call, for lack of a better word, sneeze shields that we have for food service. We have them for receptionists and we do have them for teachers. We've occurred all of that. We're really confident at the lunch periods that we will get everything sanitized within the limit of the lunch periods. I don't see a problem with that at all. We are getting a lot of great support from the teachers in helping between class periods. Every hour, every building will have their restrooms disinfected every hour. The storeings will go through and wiping door handles, things like that. At the end of the day, it is a complete disinfecting that we go through the building. And that's why we've occurred the backpacks. They can do twenty-three thousand square feet at a time. We also are in working closely with the building principals about directional signs, signs, floor signs. And every building has a different need on what they have to do. And we've, and they've been very, very upright and telling, upright and telling me what they need. And we're, that's going well too. The last thing that we seen that we thought we're going to have a problem with was going to be the drinking phones. Nobody wants to supply water to everybody. We were able to find a racial fit for the drinking phones that adapts to a bottle filler. So there will be bottle fillers available at all the buildings, touchless. The stewardess just put the, um, their container up, fill up the water and they can go. That was something that we really, we worried about that one and on that. For lack of, I feel very confident that we can do this. It was never an idea we couldn't do it. We just had to figure out how. And once we sat down and figured out how, then can we get the supplies? The supply chain has gotten much better. It doesn't mean two months from now, we don't know what's going to happen. But Rick's been very far right with me. Get the supplies in, get them in and we have them. So we will start school, we think, on a very good note. I've also explained to my staff, within an hour, there's something we forgot. Roll with it. It will figure it out. But again, I want to thank everybody for helping me out. Everybody's had great ideas and we're going to do this and it's going to be okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Does anybody, board member have a question for Jim? No, I see heads shaking now.
I just wonder where we'd be if our White House worked as efficiently and as effectively with as much commitment as we have here in Pinkney.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Michelle, I just want to say, you know, I know what we have to transition on is, you know, it's just been an enormous undertaking and it still is, it's ongoing. And just being part of this team and it's just been extremely rewarding. And trust me, I mean, we wouldn't be in this position if it wasn't for the group of people that you just heard from. And then, you know, the teachers, the, the secretaries and, you know, all the work that we see everybody contributing. And to me, that's just, that's how we do things in Pinkney. And that's not happening everywhere. And that's why I always said, if we're going to, if we can make this work, if anybody can make this work, we can. And I'm just extremely proud. And yesterday, I think I shared with you, Michelle, earlier, it was first time probably in months that I didn't have just a chock full of meetings all day long for ten, twelve hours straight. And I took advantage of that and, and spent my first seven hours just spending time in each and every building, just walking in. And any person that I could find, I started the office and then talking with the secretaries, getting feelings for, you know, you know, things that I'm made concerned with. And, you know, answering a lot of questions, really good questions and concerns. And then seeing teachers and running into teachers who are there, like we heard, are already working. And it was just, I left this, yesterday was probably the most energized and rewarding day of just hearing just the attitudes of people, the, obviously there, there are concerns and there are anxieties. Who doesn't have those? I have those. But also just the, the word trust that came in, you know, appreciation for what we're doing and just looking at, you know, getting our kids back. And, you know, one person said to me yesterday is like, we are essential. And, and I can't disagree. As educators, we are essential workers. Because if you're not essential, it means we're disposable and we can live without it. And we can't live without teachers. We can't live without public education and, and they need to be with us. And so I, I wear that badge proudly is that yes, we are essential. We were one of the many essential people that, that we've seen been working for the last four or five, six months throughout this entire crisis. And so, but also I feel like we're, we're going to create the safest environment next to hospitals in terms of cleanliness and putting structures in place. I truly believe that. When we look at the environments that we're, we're going to, and we all are, we're going to Target, we're going to Kroger's, we're going to even restaurants and, you know, we're out and about, we're not staying home. I don't think any of us are, are quarantining ourselves at home, you know, throughout the course of the day. We're, we're trying to resume some normalcy in our lives. And so when I see, and you just heard some of the things and many things that are being put in place, I, I don't know of another environment that is going to be as structured, regulated and controlled once again, and in terms of health and safety next to our, our, our hospitals. And, and so when we take a look at from the get go, when kids get here from the bus to the day, the time they walk in here and we lock the doors, there's not going to be any free flowing traffic from parents coming in and out. It can be very structured process, the cleaning that's going to happen throughout the course of the day, the mandated masks for everybody to wear from pre-K to, to 12th grade. And then the cleaning that's happening in the evening and even more so on those Fridays is that once again, we're creating an extremely healthy environment. And we have to keep in mind, we're inviting healthy kids to our school. We're, this, we're not inviting sick people in our school. And so we have the data that I've shared and I don't need to share that again. But I'm very proud in Livingston County is that we have the evidence that, you know, it is, it has been a safe place. And even just talking to folks in some of the bigger organizations such as Kroger's or Bush's, we haven't seen this flood of, of instances, I'll just be honest with you. It, it just hasn't been there and it doesn't mean that it's not going to happen and it will. We need to prepare for that. We're going to have to adjust to it because it's not going away. Even when, when and if there's a vaccine, that, that, that doesn't guarantee anything. That doesn't mean that there's a light that's going to flip on and we're going to be able to transition because there's going to be a process with that. But if we can remain extremely safe in Livingston County and remain diligent with the processes we have in place, I feel very confident. And because once again, you know, I take this responsibility very seriously. Many of these teachers and the ones that are here present tonight are not only employees or personal friends of mine and people I've come to know and love for over twenty-two years here. So it's not something I take lightly and I take the, the full responsibility lies on me and I understand that. And so, but I also feel that, you know, we're putting our kids and our staff in the very best position. When, when we think about it, you know, some data that I just came by, you know, we, we tend to think of up north and upper peninsula as being kind of a different setting and are in a different phase actually than us. But when I looked at Livingston County, our rate of infection, our numbers are actually lower in, in, in counties such as Marquette County, way up in the UP, better than Sheboygan County, Grand Traverse County, Charlevoix County. So even the places we think are probably, you know, you may not have as much, they're dealing with it. Livingston County is still one of the lowest in the state of Michigan. And, and that pattern's remained. So once again, we can make this work. The, we have the people, we have the commitment and, you know, and it's not going to be perfect like we heard, but we're going to be able to adjust, we're going to pivot. And, you know, I'm looking forward to putting it in place. And if it doesn't work and things change, we're going to pivot and we're going to change. You know, we're not stuck. This is not, we're not headstrong saying this is the only way we're going. We will change accordingly to keep everybody safe. So I just wanted to kind of, you know, just kind of wrap that presentation up because I'm extremely proud and confident in the work that they're doing. And they're really doing the heavy lifting. So I really appreciate all they're doing. And, you know, the teachers are starting to really, you know, get things in place to creative thinking. We've seen the pictures today that I posted from Farley there. Yesterday I was at, you know, the high school, seeing the band kids practicing out in the parking lot and they're spaced and they're, they're spaced out and, and, you know, they have their masks on and, and there's no adult there. They're doing it by themselves. They're self-regulating and that, that, that was extremely encouraging for me to see. So.
That's awesome. I'm, I'm, you know, again, I say, if not for the people on this, on this administrative team, I would not still be on this board. And you all have stepped up to the plate and done what we need to do. And I'm confident that we will start, we will have bumps in the road like we always do. We will have bumps in the road and we will come together and figure out how to get through these. But the most important thing is that we're bringing the kids back into the buildings where they need to be. So for a myriad of reasons. And I, I know we will take the best care of them that we can possibly do.
And, and you know, one thing a health official even said is, you know, the byproduct of this is we may create the healthiest environment that we've had a long time in just preventing the common cold, the flu, the spread of just the stuff that we, the gunk that we have to contend with on a year to year basis is that if through our, our protocols and our processes is that we, we can really keep people probably healthier than we've ever been, you know? And a key part of this too is working with parents and making sure that, you know, they, and I'll say we, as a parent, we do our part making sure our kids stay home. And we, we, we take that self-screening seriously. And, you know, when kids are exhibiting a runny nose, a cough, that yeah, they need to stay home. That there's nobody, you know, we are sending healthy people to school. We're not sending sick people to school. And I think sometimes we get in the mind frame is like, we're just being infected with all these people. And that's not really the case. These are, these are healthy kids coming to our buildings and, you know, making sure we're working with our, our parents that, you know, when, you know, kids, they, they need to stay home. And if they come in, they're going home. I mean, it's not, it's not really, oh, it's not an option and it's not negotiable. You know, that's what's going to have to happen.
Right. Yep. Okay. Any other board members have any comments before we move on?
I have a question about busing.
Yep.
I, I guess I haven't, maybe I, I plan on driving my kids anyways. So maybe I just haven't paid as much attention, but like, what is the plan for buses since last year they were really packed? I know we have a hard time with drivers. So I was just curious what, what the plan was there.
Good question. And unfortunately Sue Miller wasn't able to be with us today. But first off, I'll say the good news is that we've been able to hire drivers. So that's been, once again, I think even custodians, we were short last year through the COVID. I don't know if it's just a work issue, but we've been able to fill those positions. So that's, that's a good thing. We've been training drivers all summer. But we're going to be putting some surveys out, Melissa, just to, we need to get a gauge on who plans on riding a bus. We do anticipate because many parents are able to drive because they're working from home and their schedules are a lot more flexible. And they may have concerns obviously with the bus is that we're going to have a lot, a big influx of people driving. I, I do think that. So twofold is we want to get a gauge of how many students are riding the bus. And also, I think I mentioned this last time, we need to be efficient with our bus routes. Because we do kind of go far distances out by Stockbridge and Gregory that we may not need to. And that can be, you know, we don't want to, we want to be cost effective and plan accordingly. And so when, you know, when students do enter the bus, first off, I want to let you know that they will be stocked with masks as well. So if a student happened to be at the bus stop without a mask, they're going to get a mask. So we're going to have those on the bus. Students are going to be grouped by families. So if you have siblings, they will be sitting together. Everybody's going to get in a sign seat, doesn't matter what grade. And when they board the bus, they're going to board from the back forward. So as you enter, you start from the back and the bus fills up. So that way you're not walking down the aisle past everybody. So, you know, once again, you know, we're going to, depending on the number, we're going to be conscious of trying to spread. There's no way in a bus you can create the social distancing. I mean, it's very similar to a classroom. We're going to, you know, our, our adage is we've never, in the health department says, you can't guarantee social distancing. We can't guarantee it anywhere we go. There's nowhere we can go. I don't care if you're in a hospital. I don't care if you're in a grocery store. There's no environment you can guarantee social distancing. So that's why we have to wear our masks. But we are going to look at every single opportunity to take advantage of spacing. And so that's what you heard the principal saying, there are areas in the cafeteria, I mean, the hallway that, or teachers who can maybe, you know, bear classrooms or take their kids somewhere else. If there's an opportunity, we're going to maximize that. Because the one indicator that really is, is the deal breaker is, are the masks. And we're hearing reports and, you know, there's schools and there's kids, you know, having to be quarantined. Those schools aren't requiring masks. Those states aren't requiring masks. When we hear about those things in Georgia, there's no mask whatsoever in regulations. And so, yeah, when you don't have those strict guidelines we've had in Michigan and now here with our plan, you're going to run into those issues. And so, you know, in the, you know, we're going to, and those buses too, I should just, before I kind of wrap this up, they're going to be in between the drop offs, they're going to be disinfected those seats. So they're going to go and clean those as well. Did that help with some of the questions, Melissa?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not the expert. I'm just, I was, I'm learning from Sue, so.
Yeah, I, on that topic, Rick, I relayed, as a personal note, I relayed that to my son to be sitting with his kindergarten daughter and that, that went over real well. So it's a tough.
Yeah, I mean, there's adjustments for our kids. I mean, and that's, I'm prepping my own kids, you know, at lunch, you know, they're not going to be sitting with eight and 10 of their buddies. You know, hopefully they're going to sit with a couple. But they get it. They're, even though they're like, ah, but they're not complaining. I mean, our, our kids get, you know, the alternative is they're, they're all at home. I mean, really, that's the alternative is just we're all back at home and, and nobody really wants that.
Yeah, how true, how true. Okay. We are ready to move on to community comment. So I'm going to do the same as I did the last time. If you have something you want to say, put your hand up, do the wave thing. And I will look down the list and call on you. I will remind everybody that community comment is not a Q and A. It is for you to make comments. We've had numerous Q and A times available in the last week. So this is strictly for people to make comments. So go into the chat area, do a wave your hand thing and I will call on you. I see Gretchen there, so we'll start with Gretchen.
Yes, sorry. I just, I just have a question. I don't know if it's a comment or a question. I've had my special education parents email me lately, today and yesterday of kids that are staying. are staying home of how I am going to service them. So I guess I am just asking, we need a special education meeting to talk about this and answer those parents' questions.
Okay. Carrie is still here, I believe, so she will make note of that and.
Thank you.
Get ahold of you on that, okay? Thank you, Gretchen.
Does that make sense?
Yep. Yep.
Rick, you have the host disabled the chat. So if you're looking for hands there.
What's that? I see hands.
I see hands. She said they're, they're disabled to chat?
I'm sorry. My, my, my bad. Sorry.
No, I think we're good.
I think we're good.
The hair needs other participants, right?
Right. The next person I see is Karen Morgan.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm a sixth grade teacher at Navigator and a proud member of our Pinkney Education Association. I'd like to thank all of you for continuing all of this hard work to ensure the safety of our students and our staff as we prepare for the new school year. All teachers are anxious to meet our students and to develop new relationship with these kids. I'm sure you know that none of us truly want virtual schooling. However, under the current pandemic, we need to have safe working practices because these are learning conditions for our student population as well. With that being said, the P E A has been surveying the members weekly to see how the teachers feel about the plans that the district is proposing. And here is what we have learned. Pinkney members, our P E A members surveyed from this week, 77% of the students, of the teachers do not feel that PCS return to school plan is adequately safe and 85% feel that student work areas or our classrooms should be socially distanced. We would hope that the district would have a plan that the teachers can support overall and feel comfortable returning to work. That does not exist at the moment and we ask the board to take this into consideration when making their decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next I see Paul Sandy.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm, I'm coming to, on behalf of the My Core Rank and File Union Caucus on a statewide level. And I'm, I'm, I'm coming to you on behalf of the, the teachers who, who have contacted us from, from all over Livingston County, extremely worried. And, and some of them are fearful of speaking out due to retribution. And so I, I just wanted to share a few things that, you know, I'm, I'm a teacher in the Detroit area and, you know, all of our communities in Michigan are linked in this. And I, I, you know, I understand that it's a very difficult decision, but we have to be online until it's safe. My wife is, works in public health at the University of Michigan, which isn't too far from Pinkney. And from what, from what the experts say, this disease, the long-term effects, we still don't understand from it. Even though the death rate has settled at a low rate, there's long-term damage on the heart, including young people with previously healthy bodies. And even though the precautions that you're talking about are admirable, and I appreciate that you're talking about mandatory masks, you know, our teachers are saying that, in our union caucus are saying that, you know, kids are kids and that despite all best efforts, I even heard it said earlier, this won't be perfect. And all it takes is one case to be spread and then that's going to go home into the community and lead to an outbreak. And so yesterday nationwide, there was a record amount of, of deaths in the country from COVID all summer. We've had 165,000 or so people die of COVID-19. And there, again, there was, the, the survey said that, or the research study showed that 70% of people one month after recovering from COVID had permanent structural heart damage. This disease is a novel disease. It's not a disease that we totally understand yet. And so I would implore the board to reconsider opening up instruction for face-to-face. And again, I'm coming to you from the, the voices of, of those that haven't spoken out yet. And I would encourage you to continue surveying the, the, the union members in Pinkney because I think that people are a lot more afraid for their lives and the lives of community members in Pinkney. Thank you for your time and best of luck making a tough decision.
Thank you, Paul. Okay. I see Stacy's iPhone.
I just really wanted to thank this whole team. It really seems like you have tried your best to think of everything and things I didn't even think of, you know, to, in sending kids back. The fact of the matter is there's risk everywhere and we have to adapt and move on and do our best. And that's exactly what sounds like everyone on the Paul Pinkney School Board is trying to do. So I really just wanted to say thank you. I think you guys have done a really great job and best of luck to you. And I'm excited for, I'm feel comfortable sending my kids back.
Stacy. Okay. I think I've seen everybody. Is anybody else have any comments? Okay. I don't see any new hands appearing. All right. So thank you for your comments, everyone. We will move on to information and I think we have exhausted that, if I'm not correct, right, Rick?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we are moving on to business requiring board action. The first thing on the agenda is to approve the back-to-school plan. So it is the recommendation of the administration that the Pinkney Community Schools Board of Education approved the Pinkney Community Schools return to school plan consist, consisting of offering our families two options for learning, virtual option and the four plus one model when we are in phase four as assigned by the governor.
They're moved.
I need a second from another board member.
Bill, I'll second it.
Okay. Do we want to have any further comment, questions, concerns?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Of course, I got a comment and everything. You know, I've followed a lot of the different schools and a lot of different plans and boy, and I've read a lot of things about this. The study from the pediatricians was really helpful too. I have six kids at home, four of them are still Pinkney School attendees and, you know, even if you stay home, even if they have virtual, kids are still getting exposed. Personally, I haven't been out of Hamburg in five months. So I kind of like it because I don't have to go anywhere and I'm not, but I think you put out an excellent plan. You've worked very hard at it. And I know that past experience, working with all of you, that you will continue to be, you know, creating new ways, better ways, measuring where we are, analyzing and improving. It's a solid plan. Like I said, I'd rather have a, a plan where you just take the kids and you can keep them, you know, like a boarding school so that, make sure they don't get anybody else infected. But I feel confident that according to the doctors, psychologists, psychiatrists, kids need to be back in school. I'm very fearful. Like I said, I haven't been out of Hamburg in five months because I don't want to get sick. So, you know, I will be returning my kids to school. They are happy about it. I am ecstatic about it. I'm going to have to watch myself and make sure that I don't catch this, especially with the flu. And like was said earlier, with wearing the masks, if you can, and I know these are kids, you know, I have, I have a lot of feelings about that. And I sit my kids out every day. We have recess from what they're doing so that we can talk about it. Because, you know, they say, oh yeah, okay, okay. And you know darn well, they're going to be, being kids. But I think we have some good administrators in place here that are not going to allow that to happen. And I trust you to make the right decisions. And if you have a problem with kids, give me a call. My kids give a problem, give me a call, I'll come pick them up. So parents have to take responsibility. I understand it's fearful. They have a choice. They can do the virtual. We're rolling out, we're asking questions about the virtual. It sounds like it's much more robust and, and we're working on it consistently to make it better than it was in the emergent stage, stage last year. We did great on that. You guys did a great job rolling that out in a short period of time. You know, that was first step. So the report that Basha gave, fantastic. I mean, all of you, you're just doing a wonderful job. And people do have a choice. Teachers have a choice. We have a choice. I have a choice. I can go wherever I want. A lot didn't tell me I didn't have to go. I couldn't go. I'm responsible for my kids. Teachers are responsible for themselves. We're responsible with the teachers. We support teachers because they support our kids. If there's an issue, they have a protocol to follow and everybody has a choice. So I think it's a very, very good plan. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Bill, I know you had a question earlier today and we said we'd talk about it at the meeting. So why don't you reiterate your question?
Yeah.
I forget which one.
Yeah, which one?
The question, what your question was, if we, if the governor moves us into state, phase five, how fast will we adapt to?
Ah, yes. Thank you. I was trying to flip over to my email to what that one was.
And Rick, you said we would talk about it today, so go ahead.
Basha has an chance to talk. You want to answer that one, Basha?
I'd love to.
Get you on the floor?
Yes. So one of the things that we talked about is that, once we move to phase five, we would then get together as a district, just like we always do, and decide what is in the best interest for our students and our families. And so we would make a decision collaboratively of when we would go to a full five-day week because that's what phase five would be, where Fridays would no longer be virtual. They would be the traditional Fridays we've always had, the early release Fridays. And so we would, our number one goal would be to provide parents enough notice so they can change plans for if they have daycare or childcare issues on those Fridays. But also to make sure that we are prepared, that we're moving everything in a different direction. There's not much that we have to do, but enough just to make some changes because it is going to alter some scheduling and things like that. But for the most part, phase five is, it's similar to phase four in the sense that we still have to have some safety protocols. They're just lessened. They're not as stringent. So a lot of the protocols in phase four that are required are no longer required in phase five. And so we would have to make decisions of what, you know, what protocols are we still going to mandate? Which ones are we going to lessen on? You know, does lunch need to look different at the K six? Is it okay for our kids now to go to their specials versus the specials coming to them? Those are the things that we would have to determine. And so we will work together with the team and I imagine we would have community members as part of that team, just like we did for creating this plan is to see what's the best thing that we want to do, you know, in the timeframe that's allotted. So it would not happen overnight. That's one thing I can say. It probably happened at a natural transition, perhaps a weekend, or perhaps if it's right around, oh, I'm just going to go with Thanksgiving or holiday break. I'm not, you know, those would be natural transitions for us to go back to.
I'm also going to assume that some of these things that you're putting in place, you're going to find that you like on a permanent basis. So you may not, you will not give up everything and you'll keep some of the things just as a natural course going forward.
That's exactly right.
Right.
Yep. That's exactly right. And I also, we also talked about that if we move to phase five, our virtual students will also be able to return. So they don't, you know, at, at that time too, because maybe parents are feeling more comfortable and they're saying, you know what, phase five, I'm good to go. That's what we have to plan for all those different pieces of what that would look like.
Go ahead, Bill, I'm sorry.
I think what was at the root of my question initially was, our plan says something to the effect of if we go into phase five, that we will return to a five-day schedule or something like that. So I just wanted to understand what that would look like, that it wasn't like, okay, it's Wednesday and we're in phase five, so we're not virtual Friday, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because that seemed pretty chaotic and.
It would definitely, there would be a plan.
You have a much better plan than that.
Yeah. It would definitely have planning time. Now, on the flip side, if we move from phase four to phase three, it would be pretty immediate. And that's why our remote plan is set is because we don't have time to, that plan has been set since, you know, May, June. We don't have time to create a new plan. So that's where we had all that feedback from all of our families, our students and our staff about what worked well in the spring and what we want to keep, what we want to take away, what we want to make better. So that one's ready to go.
Okay.
Any other board member questions?
Yeah, another one from Bill.
Oh, sorry, Bill.
Regarding the, the teachers who will be doing both onsite teaching and virtual, Rick, you, I talked a little bit about that, it turns that there would be some anxiety in parents or teachers that surrounding that technology, just making sure that we have the right amount of support that if, oh no, it didn't work the way we thought, that it wouldn't create a bad situation for the students that are onsite or the students that are, that are participating in the virtual. Because those teachers that are going beyond and doing both virtual and onsite are going to have that extra, extra work, which is potentially a lot of extra work for them. But I don't want them to have the extra stress of the technology isn't working right. So you had a pretty good answer when we talked. I just thought it would be good for everybody to hear what we talked about. Right. Yeah. So we just, you know, talked about that and, you know, obviously, you know, we were already planning on support for all of our teachers. I mean, that's one of the reasons we wanted, when you see that new master schedule, we wanted specifically two days of PD, a couple of weeks before school started and not just kind of bookend right before. So opportunity for us to really spend time, you know, enhancing and making, enhancing our ability and our skills around those areas of Seesaw, Google Classroom, or, you know, looking at maybe Michigan Virtual to high school. And, and so spending quality time with that. And, and also as I shared too, is, and Basha sent out and kind of a, an interest survey for teachers K six who would like to maybe dive into the, the virtual realm. You know, for those who are going to be assigned that, and then like I said, we're looking for volunteers right now, is allocating PD for them to come in. You know, obviously we would pay them because it's not part of their, their usual calendar year. And so providing specific PD around that. And then, you know, the big conversation we're having is like, okay, what is it going to look like for Fridays for teachers? Which is, you know, that's something we're going to be talking a little more in depth with. And we just had a great conversation in our, our team meeting earlier this week. You know, I'm not going to get in detail with that. But one, one thing we'd like to see is we get some really, you know, talented staff. You know, Michael Partridge obviously is our director of instructional technology. You know, Arsenal is, she was here, I'm not sure if she's still here, but she did a great job helping support Seesaw with district-wide PD early on. But, you know, we, we want to look at opportunities to kind of, once again, offer like drop-in sessions. It's not mandatory, but on Fridays, if we can allocate time, like an hour, just to say, hey, these are there for you. So if you want to, you know, get some support, learn, you know, with, with some folks who are really skilled at that and who are great, great coaches and teachers and that, provide opportunities to continue our learning. Our Friday PDs are going to, I'm sure be focused on continuing to support teachers in this area. And as I said, is our teachers, I think, really have a high respect of Michael Partridge and his role. And his role is exactly to support teachers in the classroom. So if they get in there, Bill, and they try to do something and it just doesn't work, their first phone call is to Michael. And Michael's great. He'll get shoulder to shoulder with them. He can model in the classroom. He can sit and just watch a lesson. They kind of like diagnose, you know, what is the issue, or how do we, how do we overcome? What isn't working? And, and I think he's proven, and our teachers, I know, feel very comfortable with Michael. He's a very warm individual, he's great, went in, great support we have in this district. And so, and he's excited about that. I mean, he's done a great job of, of just building, not even support for our teachers, but we have a great new website, the support, parents, kids, and staff members will have to, I'll be pushing out too, just a great place to get additional support. So that's, that's on the forefront because there's a lot of new learning going on. And we're excited because in the spring, when we had this, we couldn't be together. I mean, we, we had to do everything remotely, which was a challenge, but we did it. And we're going to replicate some of that. We can continue some of that virtual learning for our staff because it's efficient and sometimes it seems more effective.
Okay. Anybody have any more, any board members have any more questions about this? Or comments, or?
Not a board member, but I have one more question.
Gretchen, this is not the time to be asking any more questions, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say that I totally agree with Rick, that our teachers are super important to our kids' learning and to our kids' education career. I couldn't have taught my kids for the years that they've been at Pinkney Community Schools. Thank God for those teachers. So, and my kids need to be, they want to be back in school, you know? And they understand that it's not going to be the same as it was before, but they need that connection. So I'm just really thrilled with the plan that you guys have put together. And this is coming from someone who, in the end of July, was like, nope, I'm putting my kids virtual, I'm not doing this. So I've totally done a complete 180 since I've heard the plan that you guys have going on. So I just want to say.
I think a couple of you on the board have done a complete 180. Okay, anybody else? I see Matt.
You know, I, I think the, again, you know, based on what we heard last week and continuing to hear this week. And the one comment that stuck in my head from last week, and I've shared this with others, of course, other friends with kids and asking a question, hey, are you sending your kids back? Or is your district going all virtual, whatever the case may be? And, and the one thing that kept sticking in my mind, and I kept repeating it to them, was, at least in what we see in our county from an infection rate, is, is Rick's comment of, if not now, when? What is the acceptable return point if now is not it? And I think, and today even reinforced it even more with the, the plans that the principals have put in place, that special ed has looked at specifically our, and, you know, I did hear the question today that, you know, there's still some more details to fill in for special ed, but you know what? We've got time, you know? It's August thirteenth, we don't come back till the eighth, you know, we've got time to build those things in. You know, building operations, fantastic. So, you know, and, and so looking at the plan, and we know that the state is, is needing to be just as fluid as we are. I'm, I'm super confident about the plan we have in place to bring the kids back to where they need to be. I want my kids in front of experts. Our teachers are, are experts. So, you know, that, that, that is key, I think, in our, not just my student, my kids, but all of our kids' growth. So let's get them where they need to be. But at the same time, the plan that's in place is extremely fluid. So we have the opportunity to shift. And I think that's, that's another key piece, and a huge kudos to the team, to understand the need to be flexible. So this is the direction we're going. But gets better, gets worse, you know, we can address it. And I think we've kept our kids' safety in mind. Absolutely, we've kept the teacher's safety in mind. And we have the ability to adjust if we see something going wrong in this continuum. So I'm, I'm super positive about it. I'm, you know, there's been a couple of comments throughout the night, tonight and last week of excitement. This is an opportunity for us to try new things, adapt. And I think there's been definitely some, some items put in place to do that. And I couldn't be more proud of the team that's in place, the work that they've done. And, and heading into a school year of uncertainty around us, even not that far down the road, and to have this in place and to have such a push behind it to make it work. So I, I, I'm excited. Great job, everybody. Huge, great job.
Anybody else? Board members?
Yeah, like you said, at some point, we're going to have to learn how to get around this and adapt to it, like Matt was saying. Because, you know, everybody says it's going to be with us forever now. You know, it's not going away. So if not now, then when? And, you know, if things get worse, we'll know real quickly and we'll go another route. The kids will, as I understand, they're going to be using the process like they were doing virtual as far as their, their Chromebooks. So they'll learn how to do that better, they have guidance, they'll know the program, they'll get the rhythm going. And parents won't have to become teachers, therapists, social workers, and of course, the administrators. I think it's a great plan. Oh, and, and my kids, I took a 180 because it's all Basha's fault.
A quick question.
Yep.
So since Howell gets to be the guinea pig as they start on Wednesday, let's say that it really heads south really quickly for them. Do we adapt and curve, or do we continue on the path that we're on now?
Well, I mean, depends. I mean, there's a lot of things, when you say it goes down, what, what do you mean by that? I mean, if, if it's something that's being led by the Health Department and there's an influx of things, you know, yeah, we're, we're going to take everything into consideration. I mean, I think every instance, we have to reevaluate. You know, I can't make a blind judgment call right now. I think you, you have to get all the information, you know, we're using data. I'm not just, I'm not jumping to, like right now, I'm not jumping to what we see on the news and what we hear. Because, I mean, we can be flip-flopping all the time. I mean, those are emotional decisions. And so trying to make the best educated, you know, decision we can, and, you know, it would be an opportunity. I mean, all I know is something happened, I would probably be in a meeting at a county level within probably minutes, if not, you know, just a half hour or so, and we were reevaluating it. So there's no doubt about that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else on the board? Nope. Okay. All right, then I think we are ready to vote on this. So let's start with Jim.
I can remind everyone that if things go south, northeast, you still have that pre-will choice.
Right.
Yes. James votes yes.
Bethany?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
I vote yes. Matt?
Yes.
Bill?
You're muted, Bill.
Yes.
Okay, there we go, now I hear you. Amanda?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We will have kids back in the buildings on September eighth. Let's move on to the appoint, the Professional Development Advisory Committee. It is the recommendation of the administration, that the Pinkney Community Board of Education appoint the Professional Development Advisory to be in compliance with Section 101 10 of the State School Aid Act.
They're moved.
Second.
Any questions on this?
Nope.
No? Okay, let's vote. Jim?
You need additional members to be in compliance other than educators?
Not for this committee, no.
Okay, I vote yes.
Okay. Bethany?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
I vote yes. Matt?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. And on to the rehiring of a teaching staff. It is the recommendation of the administration, that the Pinkney Community Schools Board of Education approved the rehire of Jennifer Korenchuk to a full-time special education, special education teaching position at Country Elementary for the 2020-21 school year, effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions on this one? Okay, let's vote. Jim?
James votes yes.
Bethany?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
I vote yes. Matt?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Okay. That's it for our business. We are ready to go into closed session. Bethany, do you have your?
Yes.
Okay.
So I move that the Pinkney Community Schools Board of Education enter into a closed session in accordance with and pursuant to OMA-8C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. James?
Yes.
Bethany?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
I vote yes. Matt?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Okay, we are going into closed session. Thank you for everyone who came and listened. And as always, if you still have questions about procedures, feel free to address Rick or one of your administrators in a specific building. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and I will see the board in closed session.